Pass the mic to somebody else, right?
That's okay.
They have historical problems of not owning customers. Have all those services.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Judge.
The next, sorry, the next item on the agenda is to, uh, it's discussion, presentation, possible action in regard to requests for an easement from the county to the city of Kennedy for a closed booster station at County Road 329 and Highway 72. And Ford Patton from the city of Kennedy, our city manager is here to explain to us. Good morning, Ford.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. Well, thank you for your time. I know the law business tend to, so I'll probably put, the city of Kennedy has a waterline extending from the intersection of County Road 329 and Highway 72, talk about Highway 72, along the east side of County Road 329 uphill to the cemeteries at the top of the hill. I suspect the line was initially laid primarily to service to two cemeteries. Over time, some additional connections have been made to that line. Do you have copies of that little map?
I did, I put, I put it in there. We have it, we're good.
Anyway, uh, I suspect it was laid initially to service to two cemeteries. Over time, some additional connections have been made to that line. So as a result, it really is not adequate pressure in that line to provide service to all of our customers. What I'm here to ask is whether or not county would allow the city to at least proceed with plans to place a booster station in the county right way at that intersection to pressure that line going uphill to the cemeteries. And I say, I'm here to ask because, uh, if it is okay, the city will proceed, get surveys and so forth and all done, come back to you for your approval at a later time. But before we did that, I just wanted to bounce it off you. Be sure if there's something you can do.
How wide is County Road 329 right now?
I don't believe I have payment service. The.
How wide is it? It's 2433.
So we have to need to do it long?
We, tell them that the process of taking that road right out today, I would just be, the only concern that I have would ask the city, that if there's any damage to that new service, that they'd be responsible for. By our insurance, that would be certainly part of the agreement. No problem with that. Our estimates, makers on the ground, the edge of the booster pad, the booster station pad, the approximately 80 feet on the fence, edge of the fence.
Is it going to be right at that intersection? Is that it?
Well, here's the map. We can.
Yeah, I would have to pay it. I, I would, what I would suggest is to help you put my email address back in. In that.
You think that's.
Not a problem. In other words, look, I don't know how high that stuff is going to stand up, but, uh, do you, do you feel like that could be people? For that, so we don't have a problem with doing, with obstructing across that corner.
What is there a possibility for, that you and Pete might go out there together and just look at it and come up with the place that I want to put it? I mean, we can give you the approval to do it if y'all agree with the spot. Would that be okay? Would that be okay with y'all? Hardly, is that okay? I know, I gave her a whole package of those.
As far as moving it, uh, front of the door, getting away from the corner, that, that doesn't pose a problem.
So Pete, will you go out there and point it on? Can I make a motion that we, uh, allow the city of Kennedy and Eastland County to close booster station on County Road 329 and Highway 72? That's what I'm going to, allow Bonnie and Pete Ford to pick a spot. It's a location. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Thank you so much, Ford. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
All right, Ford. Number eight is going to be discuss approved, disapproved, and into a capital improvement contract with Naismith Engineering. And David here, good morning, David.
Good morning, everyone. My thanks. Sure appreciate the opportunity to kind of visit if y'all found it here. Okay, this contract will set up some projects, conceptual design and some lighting numbers for your super building. Real closely with Logan Bridge on the highest priority areas, we've got road segments in range from one mile to seven miles and length that every crease in the county. And like I said, these are the highest priority spots that we've identified. Contract's for $45,000. It's a, it's a formal contract that's been used on state contracts previously, so it's a pretty little contract. We put this together about a month ago and it's ready for your approval. If you have any questions, hope you might have a question, trying to guess somewhere.
Don't, don't be, and I, I guess, very briefly, let me just make this one point. Uh, when David and I started putting this together, I was very new and, and I'm going through a real steep learning curve. I really am. And I would ask the court to give us the flexibility that if we see a greater need, road to be able to modify this. Because the more I'm hearing, the more I learn, the more I realize there may be other areas that's a greater need.
The need is bigger than this full lot.
Right.
You've got like 70 miles to this group or something. It could easily be 300.
I think if there's modification, Bonnie, you just point it out to us, or David points it out to us, we approve the modification. And do it in the end of the contract.
I, we really don't want to be locked in to what we have here. It's, it makes.
We can set them to every all the way.
We just have to have someplace to start.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. It covers, uh, something all there in the county, I see. Trying to, sort of, provide them, yeah.
There's a.
We have to start some.
Does your start a motion, or is your start?
Uh, I make a motion to the, to Captain.
Allow me to execute this.
And, uh, yes, ma'am.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. David, here's one from you. If this slide is from me, so you can have it on record. That's yours. Thank you, David. Thank you for all your help. I guess we'll hear some more tomorrow or the next day after August 1st.
Yeah, we're back in session three.
Well, thank you very much, David. Thank you for coming down and taking the time to do this. Tracy, we have to go, please. Number 11 is discussion possible action in regard to a proposal submitted by Barry Lacy with Barry Lacy and Associates LLC, executive search consultants, in reference to a professional engineer for the road and bridge department. I had this for a while. Um, Mr. Lacy came down here, met with us, met with me and Steve, not us. And I wanted to bring this to y'all before I asked him to try to come back or waste his time, or see if this is something that you guys have even interested in pursuing. And, uh, we were talking about salary. Mr. Lacy was extremely, extremely opinionated, uh, opinionated to the fact that finding a professional engineer right now was going to be a costly proposition because everybody wants a professional engineer to be able to do it right now. He was saying possibly he thinks that $100,000 salary would be the minimum that he would be able to get it with. Says, says he's going to be working on some ideas that we discussed and put together a package. This person who's approved by the court, not requiring to live in the county might be attractive, possibly utilizing a county truck, which on the job would be attractive, and just some different things. And if you'll look, he wrote me a letter, it would be a letter of engagement from Commissioner's Court, if we wanted him to proceed, or if we wanted him to go forward. And it was thanking us for the opportunity to meet, they're an executive search firm, and has his approach to be the executive search, we need compliance to gain a solid understanding with the organization, the business opportunities. He's got a very detailed structure of what he provides, the position of specification that actually describes the idea candidates qualification, qualifications and characteristics. Uh, together we discuss targeted and off limit organizations and agencies, sourcing and identifying potential candidates, interviewing and evaluating candidates, present the best candidates for the interview, meeting between the client and the candidates, performing detailed transcripts on the finalists, facilitate the offer negotiation and final terms, post-completion follow-up compliance of successful candidates. And if you'll look, the professional, it says, as I mentioned to you during our meeting, our firm works on a retained basis, allowing us to operate in a more focused professional manner, identifying and screening a higher level of candidates. Our professional fee to conduct this assignment would be 25% of the total cash compensation for successful candidate during the first 12 months of his or her employment. This fee will be billed through installments. For billing purposes, the first installments, we will assume of an $80,000 salary would be, most of the whole number is $6,660.66. And then the second would be due, so if we want somebody to go out and find us a professional engineer, that's what it would cost. If you guys want to not do this, that's why I'm not going to drag you back down here. I'm allowed to look at it, knowing it's going to cost, no reason to waste an everyday's time. If, if this is something that we're interested in, if you guys just want to try to advertise again, we know, I mean, I think we're pretty sure if we advertise again, we're going to have to go through some expensive advertising. I don't think we advertised last time, Launa.
I believe it was just purpose in Victoria.
We got nothing.
What'd you say his cost was?
$20,000. I put you on the one, I gave it to, uh, Michelle. And so before I even keep engaging with this gentleman or keep talking to him, I want direction from you.
You know, again, I think that we've got some work, we should start with Commissioner Naismith, they're going to be doing, Ronnie, they're doing some work with you on the roads, correct? Okay, so we've got, we've got a relationship started there. Uh, I think if we could maybe hire, contract with a firm, or they're going to take it to be used for projects or to review things like that, that might be to our advantage. Not going to be able to get a regular engineer for, I mean, hey, $1,000.
Stamp is expensive.
Stamp is expensive. Some counties I know are contracting with firms just to do the projects that they have, and, uh, so they still have access to an engineer, they assign somebody to be the liaison between their, their company and, it's like the cities do with their straight projects or drainage projects, whatever they contract with a firm, the firm will proceed, and as well as helping with creating the cost. To me, uh, we would not need one in full time, but as for the project, and with this, what's going on currently is that, you know, our roads and stuff, we're going to be needing somebody to provide us information and, uh, what technology is out there and stuff, and I think that's kind of started all of it.
And I think, I think, remember, I think the big discussion is, everybody, well, I think statute, we have to have a professional engineer. And we never get any applicants, so we looked at what it would see the cost to get one, and so now, I just wanted that guidance from y'all. And if y'all want to, you know, um, David's done a great job, if we want to budget funds and do something like that, I'm fine by it, I'm okay by it. I mean, Bonnie seems to be on the ball, they all seem to be on the ball. The whole deal is, do we, I mean, I think, do we still advertise for an engineer and see if anybody applies? Because as the statute says, we do. And we can do that. We don't have to engage in the executive search summary. I mean, we can see what happens, we can run the same ads we ran last time, we can do whatever it is we have to do.
Well, we can just broaden the spectrum that we advertise in, whereas even if we go to Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, El Paso, somewhere, broadening the scope, it's not going to cost us $20,000.
Right. But I'm just showing y'all what it costs without funding, we could get beat up about this professional engineer thing. So, there's the cost.
Yeah. If we, you know, we move, I think that we need to make one other good faith effort and advertise.
I think you can advertise.
Advertise one more time, like you want, you say broadens, uh, San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, wherever. Uh, maybe there's professional engineer services, you know, you don't want to say, but if there's a professional engineer service, I mean, that, that probably sets something too, I don't know. But, uh, after we don't get nothing back, I, I, I'm going to say that we, we try to contract with a firm for, for full-time.
So do you want to budget for something like that too? Or do we do, we just budget for the loans?
We have $80,000 to ready for an engineer. We don't use that firm money for, on a, a firm.
Well, we just have to change classification.
Yeah, but, but that's, money is right there. It's not like we're pulling up extra money there.
So.
Can I say something?
Sure.
We really haven't asked you, but I'd like to offer a couple thoughts. Um, if you want to hire a consulting, there's, there's hundreds of firms in Texas that could be like, but it's not practical to do it on a daily basis. You'd have to have some contract written, where you want to be kind of oversight of the consultant. Um, I, I think truly if you want to find an engineer to, to hire as a staff person, finding a headhunter, you can pick someone out for who probably is about the age or should be, because of demand, I mean, you almost said it already. You're probably going to find somebody who's a retired tech doc, retired from a city position or something like that, and they've got a pension or two going already, and they don't need a lot more money. You can work a part-time deal because they're up in years, and you're not actually working full-time, but that, that's kind of your possibilities. Giving them to, to move here by not using this place is possible. It'd be a lot better if you can find somebody who's over here. But I, I just, I just wonder if, this is what I wanted to mention, I know y'all voted in for an engineer as a part of the road and bridge decision. There are other options in the transportation program, where you don't have to have an engineer as the road and bridge manager. You could use someone who's a non-engineer, inclined to do that, worth thinking about this call. But because it's a whole field, and because of the benefits, there's not a lot of these things.
No, we appreciate that, David. Thank you. So, do y'all want to take no action on this proposal? And then Launa, we have that advertisement, do we just want to submit the same one again?
Just the one.
Y'all just want to submit that same advertisement again?
What's the timeline, you want to advertise?
Just take no action on this one?
No action.
Well, I mean, so since the position is open and it's there and it's placed out, we, we, I want to advertise, I can just submit, Launa has the peoples, classifieds in San Antonio one or whatever. So no action on number 11. Number 12 is approve additional cost for green environmental for jail site remediation due to unknown waste material that was generated for the tank cleanout and additional tank rental due to analytical results, and the amount is $1,753. This is a fact. And essentially what happened is when the, when the sub was discovered and then it was, um, it was pumped out, they estimated how much material was in, in that pit, and how long they would have to have in a container before it got hauled off. And the actual amount and the chemicals that were in that, that pit resulted in an additional charge of $1,753. This, uh, we do have, you know, this will go against the money that we have budgeted for the environmental cleanup in the $200,000 range. Uh, but they sent me a bill that was for more than the amount that was approved by the court. We went back and forth as to why, and I told them we had to separate that out and have to get this additional cost approved by the court. But it is, it wasn't unknown condition, because the material was estimated in the proposal that was approved in, this was May, this is based on the March 18, 2013 proposal that was approved.
Okay, they picked it up, signed it, and they hold it off. I'll make a motion and we approve, I have number 12.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 13 is to approve Chapman Engineering cost proposal dated July 16, 2013, for testing an additional assessment at Building A, additional remediation not to exceed $3,500.
Is this what you want to? Yes, ma'am. And, and what this is, um, the last soils that were remediated in the middle of the jail site at what we call Building A, when they were taken out, all four sides were tested clear, and three sides tested clear, and one side still tested that had arsenic. So we have to dig out even more materials. You approved that in the emergency meeting last week, I believe it was, and they've already done the work. They, we told them it's a rush, we need that material out. They did that on Thursday, but we need to test the, the material that was taken out. So this $3,500 is for the environmental engineers to test and clear that site. So my prayer is that the B tests will come back clear. I told them just dig a bigger hole, don't, just keep going out a little bit, dig enough that you really feel like we're going to clear on this one, because we need to have that little area cleared so that we can start the jail project when we take the bids on August 19. So this is for that testing to take place of the material that was taken out on Thursday.
Now, I looked at this, and you might understand that, okay, if they find anything that's hazardous, we have to pay additional to have it hauled off to a proper facility, or did I get it wrong?
No, this is actually just for the testing and for them to actually clear the site. The, they're just saying that they don't, they don't cover hauling off the hazardous material, but that was covered in what you approved in that emergency meeting that Green's already taken care of. Because the environmental engineers, just they do the testing and they do the recommendation and tell us what we need to do, and then Green Environmental has been the company that's been coming in and actually remediating.
So it's on the north side, it's actually showed much room to succeed?
Yes, sir. The north side of that, the previous hole that we dug, is the only one that still showed higher levels.
And the additional hole that they had, they backfilled already?
Yes, sir. They did, they've done that same thing.
They're not going to take that out in a minute?
No, we, we will not be taking that out again. I mean, unless they get out there and it does it clear, but the problem of leaving it open, we looked at it back and forth, leaving it open and then putting up safety around it and then taking the liability if somebody called in, it was less to just backfill it. And instead of $100,000 for backfill material, we use the material on the yard next door at the city yard, because that's going to have to be removed in order for us to put sewer line in. So we've been just using that material to backfill, uh, which is safe a little bit.
Okay. Motion to approve the proposal that was stated in item 13 in January, and if you have to run it.
Yes.
Allow Judge X to keep the control. One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 14 is to approve the agreement between Carnes County and Daley Spears Architects for Carnes County, PLLC, for Carnes County courthouse annex parking. And that's Lauren again. This is the, the parking, the local engineer, um, has been working with Commissioner Gaur on, um, developing dock, parking area. So what we have here is just a, a small, um, the most simple AIA document that we, that they have on the record for us as the architects to go and prepare the upfront documents and assist the civil engineer in, in getting the project bid. Because civil engineers typically don't do entire projects by themselves, they usually work with the architect, and the architect does all of the upfront documents for bidding purposes, et cetera. And so on this, what we did is we just said, whatever the civil engineer charges to do this work, we will, you know, pass that through as a reimbursable expense, we'll charge just a base fee of $500, and then it'll just be hourly, whatever time it takes for us to prepare those front-end documents, and then you can call us out if you want to during construction to look at anything that you have any questions for. But it was just to keep it very simple and assist you only to the capacity that you need to get this parking lot done. And then it, it will, he will also be covered under our, you know, our insurance, with, handled this way.
I'll make a motion to approve that. I have number 14, that's presented.
Give me, uh, Commissioner X, please.
I have a question. On the architects, in Article 6, is that a $500 plus hourly rate? Please, these are the, that's in addition to the 500, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll charge 500 just as, as our base fee, and then it'll be the hourly rates of whatever time it takes for us to put together those front-end documents.
I'll send it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Lauren, just stay there, we're going to speak in just one second. Multiple audits associated here. Number 15 is discuss approved, disapproved, the associating of Ford and Aston involved in MTC and the hiring of a law firm to assist the county attorney with a contract on the Carnes County parking lot located at courthouse annex. Request that costly attached to the project, and that is all through county attorney, Chris Meckler.
It's a request to hire the same law firm that was used in the jail project, to get on the front end of the contract, and work through it. Lauren has worked with the other lawyer, I don't know who the law firm was assigned to this one.
Okay.
But, um, I would just like to associate, it's a government contract specialist law firm, you know, for, for Rainey. Worked with the other one, she can take what they're telling you.
It was very helpful.
Well, and it puts us ahead of these contracts. We know what's going on on the front side. We're not finding out steps six months later, seven months later, and then it's non-admissible, non-fixable, so I'm intrigued to know what's going on.
This, uh, one thing that's interesting, this AIA contract is copyright, and, you know, your licenses, and this law firm has the best license that you can get, and they can modify the original document without adding attachments to it, and that, to me, is a major benefit as far as I'm concerned. It worked real well. You can read the contract better, understand what's going on.
I think motion to approve in 15 is read.
I'll send it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 16, Lauren Daley, to present project cost and budget, I should say, budget recap of courthouse and jail projects. Exchange paper, so keep what I'm not supposed to. What I'm prepared and, and what her, um, talked to us about and asked us to do is, and it makes sense, is just once a month, give you a recap on, on all of these times I come to you and say, will you approve this and approve that, and I tell you what's in the budget. These recaps and these charts will show you that we are within the budget. Um, these, this is how I track everything in my office, and so I'm going to be just presenting that to you once a month, so that you see it with your own eyes, and you can see it's all being accounted for. Essentially, the recap page on the front lists each of the categories that we have for the different budget items set up for your jail project. Um, the first column is the budget that was approved by Commissioners Court prior to December 31st. On December 31st, 2012, or, excuse me, 13th, 2012, is when we just, we had put together the additional cost of, of working with the site, with the geotech and the hazards, um, estimate, et cetera. What I've prepared and, and what Herb talked to us about and asked us to do is, and it makes sense, is just once a month give you a recap on, on all of these times I come to you and say, will you approve this and approve that, and I tell you what's in the budget. These recaps and these charts will show you that we are within the budget. This is how I track everything in my office and so I'm going to be just presenting that to you once a month so that you see it with your own eyes and you can see it's all being accounted for. Essentially, the recap page on the front lists each of the categories that we have for the different budget items set up for your jail project. The first column is the budget that was approved by Commissioners Court prior to December 31st. On December 31st, 2012, or excuse me, 13th, 2012 is when we just, we had put together the additional cost of, of working with the site with the geotech and the hazards estimate et cetera. And then we have a total approved budget as of December 13th, 2012. And then the last column is the amount of money that has been expended to date. And so behind this recap, as items B, C, D, E, F, G, and on down the line are the charts that give you the numbers for the recap chart. So for example, if you go to B, site demolition, the only cost that we've incurred so far of that $75,000 anticipated is a $10,000 cost to demolish building C. So that $10,000 has been, it was approved by the court, that's the first column. It was invoiced, the $10,000 in the second column. That gives us the checks and balances that shows the amount that was approved is the amount that was invoiced. And then we have an invoice date of when the expense was incurred and then that amount goes into the recap chart to make sure that we're staying within our, our overall budget. And also with each one of these line items, I would take a very long time, but C is the environmental cleanup. That chart has every one of the invoices that we pay to either for asbestos or environmental hazard remediation in addition to the environmental engineer, which is a separate C1 chart, which is behind that, that's all of Chapman Engineering. And he actually, sometimes the invoice is partial invoices, so we've come up with a third column that shows, you know, what was approved, like for example, on 4/9/2013, I called on C1, we approved $5,100 on a building, we paid remediation and oversight report, they invoiced it in three separate invoices for a total of $4,847. So again, that gives us the checks and balances as they invoice, make sure it doesn't ever exceed the proposed amount and the final invoice is less than the not to exceed amount. And then again, those overall costs go in our recap to make sure that we're staying within our, our overall budget. So we have one for the environmental, we have one for our survey, which was a one-time expense, but it's still, we have the cost there. The DSA architectural fees, the next one is the DSA professional insurance, that's the portion of our professional insurance that was increased by the county and been reimbursed by the county. Then we have what is called our reimbursable expenses, travel and, and other reimbursable expenses, which is capped at the $51,500. We're tracking that and showing the balance there that if we look like we're going to be going over that, I have to come back to the court for additional approval prior to that. The next H is civil engineers, their, their budget is $30,000, they're at $24,500. And, and then at the end, I just have our, our, the documents of what was approved at the Commissioners Court meeting on December 13th, 2012, just as a, you know, just as a, a record of, of what was approved and what we're working towards on the, on the overall budget. So we have this and we're keeping track of everything and then as a double check, Luana gets all of the invoices and she can have a chart that she can make sure, yes, what I paid matches what, what is on the range chart. And that gives you each I can get and then that can give you Luana as a double check to make sure, yes, we're in our budget. And keeping track of everything. Now, on the courthouse, I thought I would have both the phase one and the phase one ain't married before this agenda item and so that's why I have it on there, but they're still, still working on merging those two together to give you an overall, because I was treating them as two separate projects, so I'll be ready to present that next month.
Okay.
How much was the budget, how much was the bond for the jail?
Seven million dollars.
Okay, I got a question. And we're at eight, total approved budget on December 13th, 2012. It's eight million.
Lorraine presented something that there would be additional calls and we approve them in the Commissioners Court, I can't tell you exactly.
Okay, I'm going to, but I'm going back to, okay, we so, we don't, we authorized somebody to sell bonds, correct?
Correct.
And this is what, eight million?
Seven.
Seven million for the jail and the courthouse.
One million for the, okay. And that was both, we can vote.
Correct.
Eight million for the jail.
What counts?
I know, but I just want to make sure, do things that, pleasure, things that happened here.
And the, the other thing that, that you'll see is with the courthouse, you're going to see the same overrun. We said, if we do $4 million bonds, the courthouse is free.
Right. I see over here you've got a projected on this.
Going to run way over that too.
Yeah, like some of these, you have additional like mattresses, phone systems, you know, in, in, in house stuff that you're going to be needing. Is there any way to get some of this stuff that are current cost now and store somewhere so, so we can, instead of having, that the price may increase further down the road or is that a stupid?
We can check up what the cost increases have been. I mean, do we have to pay to store something and then, storing might be more than the...
I know, but I'm, but we have any place here we can, we put it.
No.
No, we don't.
Let me check and see kind of what the cost increases has been like. I can, I can ask, we can look and see what some of the 2011 and 2012 costs were versus 2013.
Oh, can we lock in some prices now?
I don't know if we can, I don't know. Let me check. Let me start and check on that and see what...
Can we lock in? Because as long as we keep on waiting, everything is going to increase.
All right, yeah, for phone, I would wait because of technology, but like mattresses and things, let me do some checking and see what...
Furnishings, I guess is right. TVs, right?
Okay. Okay. Number 17, presentation of possible action in regard to a designation by the Commissioners Court of one of its members to review and approve with a signature date all invoices billed generated by the Karnes County Sheriff's Office at Jail Project, 2013.
This is an official action by the court designating one of you as the individual who has signed the invoices for the construction project to the jail, just for the jail project, not for anything else. It's just an official action that I gave as part of going forward with the contract as part of the requirement that Commissioners Court approve the, the payments for the cost of each vendor, bills in the carry.
So you're just requesting a member to do that?
Any one designated by the Commissioners Court to do that.
Pete's the one that's been doing that, hasn't he, for the jail project?
Let's stop making fun of the other projects. Signed, all of us on this side. Anyone else wants a job, though we see these invoices, I mean, I don't know what's going on. I just, I just need an official action by the Commissioners Court, designate one individual for that purpose or more than one individual. I'll do it. I'll help you. Someone helps? I'll help you. Show two.
When it dates?
Either or or both.
Either or, anything in there.
So. Do you want to have Pete as a primary and use the secondary or an either or?
Either or.
A primary and a secondary?
Either or.
Okay. That way one of them's gone, the other one can help. Okay. So is that a motion, James?
Yes, sir.
The motion is that it's Pete or Shelby review and approve with a signature date all invoices billed generated by the Karnes County Sheriff's Office. Is that the motion, correct?
For the jail project. And that's either or.
Either or.
That's right.
Either or.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number 18 is discussion, approve, disapprove, trailer selection and purchase for EMS temporary in reading houses located in EMS line. Want something?
We did it. Trying to get trailer people to give you specifics, I was like, we have a single bridge. What's the one? What's, what's the decking? What's, you know, it's been, it's been a challenge, but we have a good, I feel like a very good comparison for you, so hopefully you can make a decision. What we did is we, we contacted three different companies, the same ones that we presented last time as far as just giving you some ranges. The third one just never, they would never respond back. So we ended up with two, Titan and Factory Direct. There's two, in your paper clip, there's two forms there. One is a, a side-by-side comparison and then the other one is cost of floor plan. So essentially what I did is we highlighted in the dark gray what the, which of the trailers had a better feature. So in other words, if it's just, if it's not gray, then that means it's equal on either side, on both sides. So essentially looking first at floor joists, you're looking at the Titan Factory, Breckley Series, and then the Palm Harbor homes. They both have, our structural engineer said a two-by-six at 16 on center and a two-by-eight at 19 on center. Essentially, they're about the same, but if you had to, you could say the two-by-eight at 19 on center is a little bit more, is a little more structurally sound. But he said essentially they're almost equal. Your, your gypsum board, three eights to half inch, there's a minor change, a minor difference there. The bigger differences were like the R11 in roof insulation and the R11 floor insulation. R19 is standard with Palm Harbor. So what we did is got enough grade cost to go to R19 on the other one and that's going to be on the other sheet. Metal paint, double paint windows is standard with Palm Harbor, it's by 100 more with Titan Factory to go to double paint. One big consideration you may want to look at, which I feel is important and Danny also when I talked and he felt like was important, on the Palm Harbor is you don't get to customize anything. So in other words, it's going to come with carpet and vinyl. And with the way you're going to be using it, there was concern about having carpet to keep it clean. So the Titan will let you do just the vinyl, linoleum roll only. It's an add of 500 to 750 dollars. So that, if that's a deal breaker, then, then that's an important consideration. Another item that Titan offered is, is if you want ceiling fans in your bedrooms and your living room for $25 each, they'll block, block and brace for those. Palm Harbor, they don't offer that. The cabinets were a little bit nicer in Palm Harbor, 30 inches tall instead of 24 inches tall, but the air conditioning on the Titan Factory was a CR15 versus a CR13, CR13 on the Palm Harbor, 15 is a better value. Titan did have a 30 gallon water heater, we could upgrade if you felt like a 40 gallon was needed, the 30 gallons standard. On the second page, the dishwasher add is only $225 for the Titan versus $495 for the Palm Harbor, so there's a savings there. Both of them said that once the, once they see the site or the survey, which I'm still waiting on the survey from the surveyor, they can give us a cost to go ahead and do the steps and the ramp. But on Titan, they said that the highest, that would be about $600, but again, that would be evaluated by you. We have the survey or they review the site. Availability, the Titan has two in stock with one week delivery and the Palm Harbors had, they have one in stock with a five day delivery. If you, if there's not in stock, the Palm Harbor is five to six weeks out where Titan is three weeks out. So Titan have a little bit faster service time. And both of these include delivery and setup. Of course, we still need a building pad and we still need the utilities and we still need a building permit and utilities, I need the survey so I can find out where the utilities are and then we can work. I know Robin Bridge talked about building the pad for us and then we just need to see what we need for electrical and plumbing once we get the survey. So the second page that you have, that's the comparison, the first one's the comparison. The second page has the, the actual cost for the, the two options. The Palm Harbor is, is just one floor plan, it's a 16 by 60, 1,056 feet. The cost is $35,190, but it comes with carpet in the entire place except for the kitchen and the bathrooms has the vinyl and that you can't change. On the Titan, they have, they still have three floor plans that they're, that they could offer and the associated cost is a 14 by 66, 924 square feet. With the upgrade of the insulation and the windows to do a cost comparison, without that, the base price is 299, with the upgrade of the windows and insulation, 339. If you add the linoleum, the dishwasher and the ceiling fan blocking, you have about another $1,000 on top of that. The most comparable to the Palm Harbor is the 16 by 68, which is 1,088 square feet, about 30 square feet more than the Palm Harbor. Base price 329, with the upgrades is 359 and then you need to add $1,000 if you want to do the all vinyl dishwasher and blocking and ceiling fans. And then a larger is the 16 by 76, 1,200 square feet and that's 379 with the upgrades and then you'd add the $1,000. So to me, the Titan, if you, especially if you want the vinyl floor and no carpet, the Titan 16 by 68 is going to be your best value above the Palm Harbor. You get everything that the Palm Harbor was offering, plus you get your, you get your vinyl. And it looks like they have a little more availability and their bill is, is three weeks versus five to six weeks. So you're, you're saving two to three weeks' time on, on the delivery.
So if you want to recommend you want 16 by 68?
I would recommend the 16 by 68, 1,088 square feet.
Good. Can I comment on the setup? We, we were here when Lorraine made the original presentation. We've got a lot of clean material to move. We save a small amount of those to build a pad. So if you and Shelby or someone like you come out and show me where you want it, we can do that. One thing I would request from the court, when you consider the cost, the setup cost, I think it could be up to 70,000 expended here, we need a fence. Pete and I have looked at this, and the back corner of the existing building to the corner of the other fence is the narrowest point. And to protect our, I mean, you know, we're sitting here with millions of dollars worth of property and the other side's going to be open to the feds at some point in time. I think it's imperative that we put a fence across there. And I'd like the court to approve that expenditure. It's not in my budget and I know it's not in the cost of that trailer, but when you approve it, you can approve the cost of the fence and I don't know what that figure is, I don't have a quote.
I believe in the court originally it's Jango Rain authority to go out and look for this, the initial estimated cost was 30,000, that was approved, so we will have to do some changes, but...
We have some places we can take it from.
Well, we can take it out of the current EMS building budget.
Okay, okay. But I just need... About that fence, did that fence come out of it too? It'd be part of the building, it's part of the property. I think the fence could kind of add it on. I don't think that'd be an issue at all, what do you think, Lorraine?
I mean, it is all the cost of, of getting EMS set up, so we think that, because the other things we need to think about, if you're, you're going to build, building pad, parking, I was thinking maybe since you could build a little pad for everybody to park on.
Nothing, parking, parking material is already there. There's a good hard surface there. I don't think it'd take any construction for a parking lot, but several of you have been out there and dealt with it. There was good basing material there.
And until everybody decides exactly what's going to be parked where and, and the exact site layout, they can just park on that basic material that's there temporarily. And so we have, we'll have some cost for permitting and we're going to have some cost with the utilities. We need power and the rain, we need water in the center. So...
Can I ask you this question? What is the reason for a survey when a property belongs to us already?
Well, we need to know the boundaries, we need to know where all the utilities are. It's for planning purposes, yeah, for us to be able to do the plan. Because I've been just working off Google map, which is not super accurate, yeah. So that we can, yeah, that's for us to get, and that was a, delivered that in court for the local company to do and I might just...
Paul, do you think?
Yes, ma'am.
And there have been, surveyors have been on the property working, so I don't know what phase they're in.
There's like any day they'll have a bond, so we've been calling them.
So anyway, you have that, the feds can be part of the building, is that what we're agreeing on? Yeah, and if we move, Melona can help you, she has the light items. So do we want the 16 by 68 as a component of the directory? 16 by 68 for Titan?
Just within your motion, please make note of the costs so that it will be recorded.
All right, so the motion is going to be a 16, I make a motion to approve a 16 by 68, 1,088 square feet by Titan for a total cost of 35,900 with additional cost for the linoleum of 750, is that correct?
Yes, and then a dishwasher of 225 and blocking ceiling fans of 100 is what I would say would be additional cost. So another $1,000 is...
A thousand dollars, 1,075 additional cost.
And you think we'll be able to resell that trailer once we get through?
Yeah, the, the one above it, which is the smaller one, they say that's their best seller and that, that they've seen people be able to resell it at $20,000 and that's if you do the 299. that's if you do the twenty-nine-nine, at twenty thousand. Increased insulation, I mean, the value in South Texas is definitely.
And that motion doesn't include the fencing, it's Lonny's, but that's my motion, sorry. All favors, they are?
Well, right, the blocking doesn't actually include the ceiling fans.
That's correct, yeah. We'll need to buy some ceiling fans, and then we need to deal with the utilities also, so, and then the fencing, but.
Okay, so I will find out, because as an architect, I've never really done trailers. This is a special situation, because this is what the need that you have. So I'll find out with Luana what we need to do about getting the, like, a purchase order or to talk about the actual purchase. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, box zero. Sorry, Laurie, I have to finish my line.
I'm sorry.
Item number nineteen, a select construction material testing firm, the jail project qualification received in April two thousand and thirteen.
We advertised back in April two thousand and thirteen. We, I did not put it on the agenda until now because we weren't in the need of the materials testing, and we won't be until we start the jail project, but I wanted to go ahead and get this processed and resolved. I handed out these, these construction material testing qualifications that we received, back when we received them in April. And essentially, we received three firms, TerraCon, Robert Kissner, and then Rock Engineering, all three submitted. All three firms are qualified. Any one of them would be able to do a good job for you on the construction materials testing. So in doing the evaluation, the real tilting factor to me is the fact that Rock Engineering did do the geotech, and since it was one of the, a very, very difficult site, it had a lot of expensive soils, and we ended up going to the pyramid construction, and they worked with a structural engineer on the requirements for that pyramid construction, et cetera. That kind of gives them the advantage of having them stand out above the other two. All three firms would be qualified. Rock also does have a San Antonio and a Corpus Christi office, so they can, they could be able to service us from, from either office. Robert Kissner is huge. They've been around the longest, and they're just a very large company and very qualified. And then TerraCon has done a lot of work in Carls County. They have a San Antonio office. They do subcontract out there welding, but they do everything else in-house. But I would recommend that we stay with Rock, and typically, like even Robert Kissner, I talked to them yesterday, and they asked me my recommendations, and I said, of course, they're very qualified, but I'm going to be recommending Rock Engineering because they did the geotech, and he said that's, that's normally what is recommended. It's the same engineering firm that does the geotech, that recommends the foundation design, also does your inspections and testing when you can keep it all together. So what I would recommend is we go ahead and select them and ask them to give us a decomposal, and we negotiate with them, and if we can't come to an agreement, then we would go to, to either Robert Kissner or TerraCon next and negotiate with them.
So Rock is your recommendation?
Rock is my recommendation, yes, sir.
Now, would we, for Rock Engineering to be the, Rock Engineering, correct?
Rock Engineering and Testing.
And Testing to be the firm to do the project, to do the general test, such as the construction test.
I'm just gonna make a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed?
I'm sorry, the second.
Item number twenty, discuss approved, disapproved purchase of a black Angus container, number one P X U three-three-one-zero-nine-two dash five with an amount of two thousand nine hundred and forty-five to the store courthouse items.
Yeah, we talked about this other time, we had a handout.
Yeah.
Did you need to approve it?
I make motion approve, item twenty, it's.
Second. Item number, made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Moving to item number twenty-one, discuss approved, disapproved of auto cycle bill payment for black Angus container, number one P X U three-three-one-zero-nine-two dash five with an amount of two thousand nine hundred and forty-five. Two thousand nine hundred and forty-five is total cost, five hundred holding fee paid for Pete Yower.
That's where you had, hey, we're just going to reimburse you. I make motion approve, item twenty-one, it's.
Second. Item has made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twenty-two, discuss approved, disapproved of auto cycle bill payment reimbursement to Pete Yower in the amount of five hundred dollars, holding fee paid for black Angus container by Pete Yower, container number one P X U three-three-one-zero-nine-two dash five.
I make motion, we, let's stay.
Item. Motion been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twenty-three, discussion action in regard to county road, county road three-twenty-six, establish policy speed limit for vehicles of twenty-five miles per hour pursuant to Texas transportation code, sometimes the county roads and bridges, chapter two fifty-one, general county authority relating to roads and bridges, section two fifty-one, point one fifty-four maximum, reasonable and prudent speed of county roads.
I'd just like to use this opportunity to America on the court a little bit. We'll get these roads fixed, because people start driving too fast. That's the truth. The truth is, this is one of our bond roads, and we're completing it this week. It's in super nice condition, and the citizens are saying, can y'all please slow the traffic down? So that's why it's on the list.
I'm with it, we, that's appreciated. Ron, what's Steven twenty-five on that?
Yes.
That's presented.
Seventeen two.
So where we at? This is made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twenty-four, discuss approved, disapproved, forward at county investment committee.
I'm sorry, the judge just got called off, so he's going to leave. Probably won't be back for the rest of the meeting.
We, we talked about this when Vial had our, our last meeting, about mortgage for the, the budget stuff, that's for the bonds, I mean, pretty high, the investment. And it was pointed out that in the, in the, in the deal that we had to have a, Vial pointed out that we need to provide a, having investment committee. So, who does we approve, form a county investment?
I see.
And we're, we're going to form.
Yeah, I think the next agenda takes that.
Okay. No problem. Motion been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Moving to item number twenty-five, discuss approved, disapproved, appointed the county judge, county auditor, county treasurer, Robert Henderson, and one of the individuals from the local bank to the county investment committee.
I would.
So we talked about the last time.
Yeah.
Is motion.
I make motion.
Point a committee consisting of first name, item twenty-five.
Been made a second, all favors say aye.
Just as a side note.
Well, I'm sorry.
The committee cannot actually meet until the policy is amended to state that, which I assume will be on the next agenda.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twenty-six, approve bond for Luana Cast, S. Casper, county auditor, one hundred dollars payable to district judges.
I'm with you to approve this.
Made a second. It's been made a second, all favors say aye. Any, any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twenty-seven, approve bond for Ronnie Jean Mitchell, inter-county road administrator, one hundred dollars payable to Carls County judge.
Make the motion, we've stayed with bond, Ronnie Jean Mitchell, inter-county administrator, with that, I'll pay the county judge.
Been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number twenty-nine, discussion possible action whether to form a ongoing benefits proposal review committee, committee and approve appoint members.
The reason I put that on the agenda, several years past, we have done that, and the committee brings a recommendation to the court. We are scheduled to receive proposals on the eighth. We'll have a special meeting on the ninth to open them. We could award possibly on the thirteenth, but if y'all want to have a committee to review, then we'll have to have another special meeting sometime to actually do the award. Of course, we're going to be having lots of meetings next month to do this budget. But it's up to y'all whether you want a committee to review it, or if you just want my office to put a spreadsheet together, the way I've done in the last couple of years, and make a recommendation.
I would, I would say we should first form, yeah, I would say. Do you want one of us to help you with that?
We're fine, so no action on number twenty-nine. Go to number thirty, discuss establish a board date for ongoing benefits for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen.
Again, we're to receive proposals on the eighth. It'll be a meeting to open them on the ninth. Do we want to set the thirteenth as the award date, or sometime later that next week? Like I said, I'm sure we have budget workshops again.
Thirteen, five.
Thirteenth is regular court.
Set it for the thirteenth.
Unless there is a need to negotiate between two vendors that propose the exact same thing. Because if we need to negotiate, there won't be time that Monday, and you don't have to come to the court to negotiate anyway.
Regular court announcement date?
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, right. August.
Yeah.
So I need a motion now.
I make motion. Award.
Establish a board date.
Establish a board date, August thirteenth.
Been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Moving to item number thirty-one, discuss approved, disapproved, connection of previous events to Carls County and reported in volume seven eighty-two, page eight seventy-five of official records of Carls County taxes, and approved, authorized county judge to sign documents.
My request is that you give me the ability to contact the law firm again in Texas, reference a quick D that did not designate a grantee, and it's supposed to designate in Carls County. The lawyer that sent the request in says that his client, only member, had him, a D giving all the metals to the county, they want to negotiate the mental interest under about twenty-five lots. There's about twenty-five percent mental interest that we're talking about, about twenty-three acres. I'd like the possibility to talk to this lawyer, and see what I can work out and bring it back to the court as a possible settlement. If not, then what, then my recommendation is what action we should take in court, a lawsuit or anything else. I don't know that the value is that much from the two lots, the two acre, but it's something, okay. They don't interest that now, or, these lots are in a hot spot.
Herb, is that the correct reference number? Because when I, when I pulled it up, it's an all gas and middle lease.
Well, that's what I got off of his, his letter, and that may not be correct, but it is a, a D from Alan Reed Tilson, T.I.L.S.O.N., a two D, and it doesn't have a grantee in it. The, I have a volume zero seven six two, page eight seventy-five.
Seven eight two. Okay, yeah, the agenda says seven eight two.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just put it down wrong. That is need your permission.
Is it about eight seventy?
Eight seventy-five.
Seven six two, yeah.
The volume is seven six two, though, or the letter?
The volume is zero seven six two. The page is eight seventy-five.
So that item has it wrong, it's not seven eight two, it's seven six two.
Seven takes seven is correct. I put it.
Can I make a motion? Authorize program, contact the lawyer about this complaint, Carls County, posted on page seven six two, page eight seventy-five, and report to Carls County.
Look, with that changed, this agenda item doesn't say seven eight two.
Well, that's not what the agenda item says to contact anybody, it just says to correct the previous complaint.
That's basis of which I will contact it to see if I get it correct.
You want to just make it as presented, with the change from seven eight two to seven six two?
Okay. Make a motion. Item number thirty-one, change the body, the body number seven six two. What about that statement?
Before the, I do anything, I would bring it back to the court, but for y'all's fact approval, and I didn't have the authority to come through.
I think so. It's been made a second.
Yeah, second.
Been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number thirty-two, discuss approved, disapproved payment to the Texas regional A, invoice number two with an amount of two thousand, B, invoice number three with an amount of three thousand, C, invoice number five with an amount of five thousand, Arthur Genshaw. She's not here right now, but I guess these, these have been made.
Yeah, they, they provide services, they covered, there was the days coverage, but there was nobody to cover at the daytime, so we didn't pay it to people.
Services been done.
Service been done, I believe, I guess I can.
I'll make a motion approve, item thirty-two, it's.
Second. Been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. One of the same, motion passes. Item number thirty-two, discuss approved, disapproved, amended budget for unforeseen emergency services, A, two thousand to pay Texas regional EM, EMC, EMS, I'm sorry, B, three thousand to pay Texas regional EMS, and C, five thousand to pay Texas regional EMS, Arthur Genshaw.
Same, thirty-two, please go ahead.
Yeah.
I make motion approve. Item thirty-three.
Second or something? Been made a second, all favors say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Item number thirty-four, payment of bill.
Page four, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five, or nine hundred and nine dollars to you.
Was that down there? Three.
Okay, according to my statements, I don't see your nature times speaking on a waste site.
Oh, that's a waste time. Okay, four thousand nine hundred is about, sorry, sorry. Okay, that's yours.
I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
Right, you would have made a waste time.
Thank you.
It's like, this is all.
Just so everybody knows, a, on County with, Avenue seventy-two west, east, County three thirty-one, they approved all tanker, because the dollar, all that's going on, on to the ditch and stuff. That's why the judge had the other Steve Plats, the bridge operations, went state call, and so they were dealing with that, and it seems to be under control at this time. So we'll be through here.
I was also called. I approve.
Say the, point out a few, out of the ordinary things on page two, the third entry, the Texas Association of Counties property insurance coverage, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighteen cents.
Page two.
If you will then jump to page eleven, you'll see the second entry is six thousand, two hundred dollars, thirty-three cents, that's road and bridges, mobile property insurance coverage, so total out of county.
so total out-of-county money to tag for property insurance is twenty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-one cents. There is also another payment to tag on page fourteen, from juvenile probation funds, for their property insurance, in the amount of fifteen hundred, seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents. That dollar amount is not out-of-county dollars, that's out of Carls County juvenile, the way you're quoting. Back on page two, almost halfway down, there is a payment of fifty-two hundred dollars to working association money. That's our second installment on salary survey. You'll go to page three, the last entry is fifteen hundred and forty-five dollars payable to penis scale company. That is at the waste station, and that is the digital display for the scale. And if you go to page four, halfway through, you'll see the three Texas Regional EMS payments, five thousand, two thousand, three thousand, those are the ones I'll just approve, payment that we're amending the budget for, but they are included in the bill cycle. There will not be separate checks out of cycle issued for those, since they're heads over the past. You'll go to page eight, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, Texas Comp Fix, that is for new computer and installation at J P Ford's office in Runway, that is being paid out of J P's technology funds, not out of normal general fund budget. You go to page ten, the first category expenditures of eighteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, those costs are all material costs attributable to the road bond, and the road bond expenditures to date, including that eighteen thousand, is two hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and twenty-five cents. Further down on the same page is a payment to R D O Trust, which is R D O Equipment Company, sixteen thousand, two hundred twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. This is a previously approved budget amendment, purchasing the equipment that is previously written. On page twelve, this is a payment out of lateral road funds for road materials, fourteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty cents. The current budget contains twenty thousand dollars, one, twenty thousand, one hundred dollars for road materials from lateral road funds, which are funds of the same, because the budget is sweeping, and regular road bridge, I move those invoices to lateral roads. Total bills this cycle is one hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
I make a motion, thank you.
Motion been made, seconded, all the papers, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passed. Yes, sir, thank you. Thanks, Ron.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, when you come back to the building, would you come by the office to sign your bond?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, and moving on to item number thirty-five, citizens to be, for general counties. Anybody, we had someone?
Yes, two.
You're two.
Ms. Hall.
Hi.
How you doing, ma'am?
Hi. Thanks, it shows perfect example of where citizens stand in priorities. You see where we're at on the agenda, at the very, very bottom line. The concept of putting the citizens to be heard in any form or fashion at the very end of the commissioner's court meeting, reveals a genuine lack of respect for citizenry. It is censorship, and it shows utter disdain for the very people who pay their salary, and puts each of you in your way to decisions. They are going to work. It should not matter if an individual's chosen topic is on a fitness regimen item. Somebody may pay to comment or complain about county vote. A four-H leader may come to express their opposition to an office move. A citizen may question the legitimacy of the outside counsel being used, or its reputation. There are many citizens out here with extensive education, business and military experience, lawyers with legal facts, which not only can be helpful to inform this commission to make decisions, but in addition, let us not forget our first importance to be able to speak, if it is even just an opinion or an argument. Perfect example is the gentleman, Arnold Kaiser, got here and spoke, and extended his three minutes. I would recommend he might consider extending that to five minutes. You should want the community's input and help. You should look to citizens, to committees, to help you do research and discuss issues. They have information they can share and help you with. If a citizen should request to see a copy of invoices or bills paid for a particular entity, it shouldn't be across, maybe the transparency is in the best interest of the Carls County taxpayers. The idea of circumventing this normal protocol recording the agenda must come to an end. You're aware of the current time, are you aware of the current time, that the commissioner's court agenda is not even being posted, according to the local government code, eighty-one point zero zero three? And there is no official verification that that agenda is being posted seventy-two, with seventy-two hours in advance, which is a local government code five-five-one-point-zero-four-three. Nobody can see whether that agenda was posted by nine o'clock Sunday morning on that bulletin board unless we drove up here to look at it. There's no verification, because it's not going through her office. The Office of Attorney General Opinion, number J N dash six-three, State City County Clerk, is to issue all notices, all writs, all processes necessary for the proper execution of powers and duties of the commissioner's court. Therefore, all of the agendas that have not been gone through her office properly are not stamped and filed as official documents. Why is this changed? We did it the same way for years without them. I hope that no citizen goes through being harassed and threatened, as happened to my husband in the last public meeting, and obviously threatened to be arrested for not signing into a public meeting. This is not required by the Texas Open Meetings Act, to sign in. Each of you commissioners must rise up, and stand up, and speak up, and take a stand on behalf of the people you represent, and uphold the proper procedures for conducting government business. It is your duty to represent your constituents and do things the right way. You are the checks and balances to our local civil government. I also might request that in the budget, you consider audio system. A lot of the people that stood today, we cannot hear and understand. Thank you for your time.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marie Sharer.
Good morning. I'd like to check.
She's on ours.
Before, I'd like to have just a little bit of the latest one, before we take much time. I do touch on the fact of, uh, you think that occurred, uh, in, out of seventy-two years ago. That event was World War Two. In our midst, we have, in the big, in the back, participated in that war, and as a person seen, and it took a lot of courage. Mr. Texas. Earlier in dealing, uh, Dean eighty-six, that he was recognized as a veteran. Took a long time to get. My father told me many years ago that it is very, everything is obligation due to help and defend those that can't or will not defend themselves. My father did for four and a half years, World War Two, to help free those that oppressed, by the, by the Axis powers. Contrary to what even mayos may speculate, neither Russell, Swee, or Carol Swee, asked me to speak on his behalf, but it's time for somebody to speak up. I heard this, uh, the county, county wife in an article regarding the resignation of former chief deputy sheriff Russell Swee. It is my understanding that Russell made an offhand remark at an Axis scene, and that it was made in jest, however, in true Barkishaw fashion. She is using this offhand con to suit her own political agenda. And it's sad, my first amendment rights to free speech can be taken by the likes of the county judge. She can be, she not like lie about people, maintain her position, and hire a law firm to abuse her position to cost someone his job. And it's odd, a complaint is made by Barkishaw individually, in her premier banking service, at State University. Then a meeting was held, as I, uh, as I understand, in the county judge's office during normal business hours, and I heard Hancock County Attorney, Barkishaw County Judge, Houshman County Judge Barkishaw, and Shaw's attorney Brian Smith, and Sheriff Wayne Villanueva, were in attendance. My questions are, why was it being held in the judge's office? Is she finding her individual capacity, or is county judge? Is she using her office as a judge as an attempt to intimidate Mr. Swee? Why was the county attorney present? Is he representing the county judge, and/or Barkishaw in her individual capacity? Did he help make recommendations and write a complaint? Why was Sheriff Villanueva present? Did he make any recommendations and write in a letter? It has the appearance, at least to me, that the meaning of those present were not there to assist the situation, but to hang Russell Swee. As a collective effort, their purpose appears to have been to combine efforts to remove Russell Swee as the chief deputy. Barkishaw's comment that this is politically emobayed is in fact an accurate statement. However, it is politically emobayed by Barkishaw, and I'm less guided perception to set up her reelection. Barkishaw has debated at several attempts to impeach, vindicate, and try to remove virtually every elected and appointed official in Carls County. The, the longing, beginning with by and alone, Carol Swee, Bob Houshman, Betty Yoder, Juana Casper, and Jeffrey B. Ick. If you do not agree with her on, or go along with her hackneyed scheme, this is what you're in for. Big question now is who is next? My guess is Sheriff Villanueva. Or her stated opponent, county judge, Walter Long. Russell Swee is guilty of making an offhand remark, and perhaps even unprofessional remark. However, it should not have been raised to the level that it cost a good man his job. I do not believe that Barkishaw's complaint is entirely truthful. Barkishaw has, in the past, said many things about many people in this county that are untrue, to serve own personal and political purposes and agenda.
Mr. Yoder, that's three minutes.
May I, may I, a motion to give him a little bit more, extend his time, like we did for someone?
I'm with you, extend two minutes.
Your question.
All right, second.
Everyone knows that Russell Swee should.
Motion, I'm sorry, motion been made, seconded, all the papers, aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
I believe it to be true, now in this case, everyone that knows Russell Swee should contact the commission, voice their concern and disclaiming regarding the railroading of Russell Swee. He does not deserve this treatment, and this tremendous loss to Carls County, and his residents. The actions of Barkishaw in this matter are reprehensible, as is the lack of leadership by Sheriff Villanueva. There is another relationship, and I believe the citizens of Carls County will reflect their displeasure by re-laying the new county judge, and when the time comes, a new sheriff. Carls County has lost a good man. And I've been told on the new case, I believe this to be true, that if goodness is nothing, evil will relate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything to say, anything?
Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow at?
Three thirty is what it should be.
Three thirty for the?
Presentation by October.
About work.
Is there any information available for those of us that can't, cannot attend that meeting tomorrow?
Nothing, that's better.
Where, where are you gonna be?
Cap union, ten minutes.
I'm not sure, I'll have to ask the judge, but.
Yeah, we're about to work.
Sure.
Can I, can I add something, just to further confirm? It would really need to be, so we had some kind of a P A system or?
Well, there, there, we have something in the budget, we're looking at, actually, it's a P A system with a recording system.
Oh, great.
So, and also, we can maybe stream this thing on the internet as well.
That would be great, because these units in the right, it's helpful in that period.
I agree, but we're, we're looking at that, we are looking at that.
Thank you all very much for attending. Next one is to adjourn.
I see.
This is made and seconded, all the papers, aye. Any opposed?